All right, today, the few, the proud, attending council meeting. Rochelle wants to get settled. If you could do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Han. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dan Han is absent. Councilmember Cox?
Present.
Councilmember Stubble?
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. And next, approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
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 That passes, and we'll move right on to mayor and council updates. And Councilmember Larson, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. July 26th, I think that's this coming Saturday, at Fremont County Solid Waste is having their annual household hazardous waste disposal. And that'll be from nine o'clock in the morning till two o'clock in the afternoon there at the Fremont County landfill. So if you've got any treasures stored away in your garage, nuclear waste, anything to that effect, you know, just bring it on down, and they'll, they'll take care of it. I thought the, the pig roast went very well. We had a lot of really good people there, there helping. I'm guessing, and that's all it is, is just a swag on the, the numbers there. But there, there was over 2,000 of the, the boats used, you know, that holds the sandwiches and so forth. So somewhere around that, that area, you know, as far as people and so forth there. And, uh, people seemed to enjoy it. The, the music was good, the weather was good, and, I just thought that it went well. And then, I was stopped on the street here the other day and was asked very specifically to give all the city employees a big pat on the back for all the different projects that are going on with streets, sidewalks, parks, et cetera, et cetera. And then they were also very adamant that I thanked the mayor for the great job that she is doing. And this was not her mother. So anyway, I've, I've done my, done my job there. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Cassidy?
Mayor, council staff, I just want to say thank you for your patience with my absence for so long. We got back late Wednesday. Everybody returned safe and sound. Was also at the pig roast. It was very well attended, and thank you for all the efforts of putting that together. Nothing to report from the, from the last meeting that I was able to attend, but in the, for the future, would like to look at some liaisons. So, thank you.
That will happen. Councilmember Cox?
Do you wish for? Okay, just a quick question. I have the golf course question of, were they able to resolve their water? Were you aware of a water issue for them? And Lance, I'm sorry. Were you aware of that? Is that so? And were they able to resolve it?
I think they're in the process of resolving it, but it was a power issue. And what it was to the controllers. So they had all the new controllers. And then, all of a sudden, I think the direct Barry Underground cable wasn't in conduit. And it aged out. They were having shorts and problems. And so they were trenching in new conduit wire to resolve their power issues.
Wow. Thank you for that. I wasn't, I had just briefly heard about this last week, and I was curious if they were able to res- or this week I heard about it. I mean, what, it's, it would have been last week.
Yeah.
Um, and also, just a brief update on the golf course. They're in a good way. They've been doing a lot of excellent improvements. Please go up and see the Pro Shop. And just, it's just a thriving golf course in a small community like we live in is, is really good. So that, I'm, I've been impressed with the golf board and with the new pro up there. Mr. Scott. Lita has their meeting tomorrow. So there's an update there. Then the Community Services Block Grant that I also sit on, they're still in limbo with some potential funding opportunities, or lack thereof. So I will keep you posted on how that will either negatively impact our community or positively. They've made really good progress in increasing their service delivery in specifically as it relates to referrals. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but they, they're receiving referrals and helping folks really establish a case plan in order to get out of poverty and to really start thriving. In doing so, there's some housing assistance, some job, career and education goals that are set. So they're doing a good job and increasing the number of people served. And then the Chamber of Commerce, I was out of town when the meeting happened, so I won't have an update till two, two months.
Councilmembers Stubble?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to allow Councilman Larson's leadership with the pig roast to go unmentioned. So, thank you very much. I think that you can, you will say it's everybody else in the room, and, and that people pulled a lot away, a lot of volunteers from city staff and from family members and other organizations. But you played a key role there, Councilman, so thank you. And your remarks were spot on. The Energy and Environment Group is going to be, I believe, bringing an application to the Blue Sky Grant Program for those solar and battery backups for City Hall to our next business meeting in August. So be ready to review that in more depth. That's the pre-grant application authorization. Did I get that right, Regine? Great. On other liaisons, I'm planning on speaking with every council member, so if I haven't already, you'll get a call from me about the liaison assignments you have now and where your interests lie, so that we can do some shuffling and get Councilman Cassidy in a, a good spot. So if you have something you want to stick with, or something you want to give up, look forward to hearing from you as we do some shuffling on those assignments. And lastly, I didn't want to let us drop such a good idea, Councilman Han, that you brought up at our last meeting, I believe, around parade safety and the candy distribution. So wanted to make sure we were still thinking about what those steps could be to ensure that kids, folks aren't running into the street and towards the floats. And chatted briefly with our attorney this morning with Mayor White about that would look like an ordinance for us drafting policy prohibiting that type of candy throwing that would then apply to all parades, because we think of July 4th. But of course, right now, we have at least one other parade that's hosted by the city of Lander. So I hope we can enforce ourselves at Light Up Lander. And I think a conversation is, before we move towards that policy drafting, a conversation, Mayor, is with the organizers of the Fourth of July Parade. It's on your menu. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, great. So look forward to hearing about input they have. And, you know, I know we have lots to talk about then, even if we drafted that kind of ordinance prohibiting the candy tossing, you know, enforcement is then the next step to tackle. But I, I don't want that enforcement to trip us up and ensuring the safety of that parade for as long as we can. Because is, you know, the parade's longevity in future in Lander is only dependent on how safe we can make it, as well as what we want to do for our community. So thank you, Councilman Han, for making sure that we paid attention to that. Mayor, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Josh Han?
I have nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. To be clear, we're talking about not candying, not throwing candy from the floats, but still, yeah, still, still have plenty of candy. Yeah, we'll keep the Dennis of Lander happy. A few things from my end. One, while this isn't directly related to our liaison positions, I do want to call out, we've had two really impressive examples of community assistance in recent days. One, the fire council member Josh Han was part of, you know, this Lander County, all kinds of folks helping out on that. And to me, that's, it's important to note, I, that's one of the things I value strongly. I think we all do, that we're a community that supports each other and offers additional aid. And then also, there was tremendous outreach again for the search and rescue effort for the gentleman who, the solo hiker on Gannett, not only from our Lander community, but we had tremendous support from Sublet County, brought their helicopter over, T-SAR. Gosh, Saturday alone, we had, I think, over five hours of helicopter time. We had technical climbers from T-SAR as well, members from DuBois SAR, et cetera, let alone our, our own Lander crowd. So I'm really appreciative of these events. And in both, I wish the outcome were different, but we do the best we can. And I'm, I'm really proud to live in a community where we, we do have those kinds of, of outreach. So more specifically, back to liaison, yes, Lita is scheduled to meet tomorrow. We'll see how that, that meeting flows. I haven't seen an agenda yet. I want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec Crew. So they're, they're finally on the tail end of what's been an incredibly busy summer this last week with some of the, the last really big push. There's still stuff going on, for sure. But Pig Rose, Lander Presents, Tour to Wyoming, et cetera. And as I learn more about what they're doing, just a reminder, you know, they've got over 50 acres scattered throughout Lander that they're responsible for, which also means trying to provide that care outside of when all these different events are happening. So it's not just, you know, water every Monday, Wednesday, Friday is like, oh, we can't, there's a big event happening. So I really appreciate how both flexible they are and hardworking for that. And then lastly, in terms, and I think Interim Chief Wall will speak a little bit more to this for the Police Department Handbook, a reminder that our role, while we're certainly welcomed and encouraged to review the procedural elements of it, remember that what we, what we are responsible for is the policy portion. So as you go through it, think about questions that might be part of the policy, but we're not going to be trying to critique or edit the procedural elements of that. And that's it for me for that. So moving on, staff reports, speaking of, Interim Chief Wall just teed you up.
Yeah, teed me up, and then you accused me of being Debbie Downer.
I said your sunshine and roses.
Business as usual. I, if I can say first and foremost, if you cross paths with any of my staff here in the new, near future, if you'd give them an extra pat on the back. We've taken some pretty very terrible calls over the last couple of weeks that have potentially had effects on them. And I am extremely proud of them and how they handled themselves, how they handled the calls and how everything turned out. But it's been a rough couple of weeks, for sure, there. So if you see them, if you give them an extra praise, that would be much appreciated. As far as the policy and procedure manual, this discussion the mayor and I had today, it's big. I get that. I got a full version of it. If you look down by Councilman Josh Han, that's what it looks like printed out. There's a large amount of procedures in there. We had made it, we had had a, a small discussion on separating policy from procedures. And I guess I'm against that in the sense of if you end up with two different documents, if you will, a procedure can be changed that at some point might circumvent a policy. So I don't think it's proper to have those as separate things. It's all an interworking intertwined. I went through specifically and highlighted probably seven of the newest policies that should pique your interest. The one on mobile data terminals is a brand new policy, because we've never had them before. Body cameras, we have. We do not have a policy on it. Social media, not only how we use it, how we release it, but how my people use it in their personal time, as they are still presenting as one, the Police Department, two, the City of Lander. There's a discipline policy in there. We currently have none about discipline. There's nothing about conduct unbecoming. There's nothing about insubordination. None of those things are in policy right now, which is extremely problematic when you start to hold people accountable. There's another one in there that's called Personnel Early Warning System. And that's something that I've bred into my supervisors, that I continue to push for them to have one-on-one meetings and conversations, so they can queue in on these early warning signs of issues that their people are having. There's a training policy that now forces us to stay on track with their training and do our part to make them better and provide for them training to grow. And there's one that follows it called Career Development, that pushes them to meet with their people and build a long-term plan of what is your legacy? Where do you want to be? And when you're done with police work, what did you do? And it's our duty as the leaders of the department to meet with them and build those goals of how to get there. So there's some, it looks big, because it is, but a lot of it's procedural. A lot of the procedures that you will see is, these guys learned 90% of this in the police academy. But for some of them, that's six, seven, 10, 15 years ago. We're blessed that we're not Riverton in the sense of the type of calls and call volume that they take. Inadvertently, if you don't use it, you lose it as the mind frame, right? So there's a lot of policy in there of, when do I read Miranda? How does Miranda apply? When I put someone in custody? When do I need a search warrant? When do I not? That's not necessarily a policy. This is a reminder and a one-stop shop for them. If they're not experiencing it very regularly, they have one place to go. This is why this is in here. This is the procedure. This is the way it's laid out. And it's also backed by all of Wyoming State statute that supports it, that follows it. So as you read it, as it looks like a lot, just understand there's a lot of procedures in there, just so they can stay in tune to what they need to know when they're dealing with it, because they don't deal with it all the time. You know, we took a pretty terrible call last night that I was called immediately and, and ran right down to the scene. And that's what it became, is our lack of exposure and/or experience of what do we do? So I want to have one place where they can grab this giant book and look, this is what we do, and these are the rules, and this is why. So it looks like a lot, but I think it's very much needed. So I don't have much more than that, unless you have questions for me.
I do. Questions?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I, one thing that stood out for me, you know, there's a couple of obviously concerning things with not having a, a working document that allows for access and then to address staff-related issues. So that's great that this is resolving that. Do you have in there, you talk about very difficult calls, and I don't see those decreasing.
No, they won't.
And so my, my question would be, how do you deal as a department? Because I do know and understand that a lot of men in general don't love to talk about their feelings. But there's been, there's secondary trauma is a really big issue amongst law enforcement. And if it's dealt with early on, research suggests that then, as they go through, they're able to maintain and address and deal with that secondary trauma in a much different way. Do you have a debriefing process? So you go to a scene last night, it's a pretty horrific call you're dealing with. Is there a way then for those officers to have an intersect after that happens with either a paid professional or other folks within your department? Is, do we have that within our policy?
So in the early Personnel Early Warning System policy, it touches that very gently. It's actually a conversation the mayor and I had today is, the current process, how it works currently is, today, after about noon, as their night shift guys, I give them time to wake up and get on their day. And then I personally sit with each one of them. We discuss it, where they're at with it. Each one of these is different, you know, like the Pinecrest standoff, we have an official after-action review where we invite everybody. And that's great procedurally, but again, with, I don't want to share my feelings. I'm not going to stand up in front of 20 cops and be like, look, my feelings are hurt. That's just not a thing. So our current process is I meet with them individually behind a closed door. But the mayor shared with me today kind of a PDF questionnaire of yellow, green, red. Where are you with all of this? How did this affect you? Did it personally? Did it not? So those are things that I'm working on right now of how we start to move this. And if you remember, I partnered with CWC, Training Wise, with their grant writers. I've been working with Andy Hansen, is the director of that, with a mental health or a preparation for battle class for first responders that they're going to write the grant and put on. And we're going to start, I'm starting to push a lot of my people to these mental health style trainings to where they will go and start taking things away from them. But a true process of how we're going to handle it is the very beginning of what I'm working on now, because we've got to do something. I mean, if you look in there, there's a policy about what do we do if one of us is killed in the line of duty? Who's in charge of what? Who does what? So a lot of those look super long, but if we go back to Monty per se, we all sat here with what do we do now? So these are option, these are opportunities for me to put it all in place now. So there is no question. We just opened the book, and these are the steps that we follow. And the mental health side of it is probably one of the biggest for me of how we start helping them early before.
Yeah, that's right. I think that early, in early prevention, really, I mean, it's, it is prevention, because oftentimes those things won't come out till the next call.
Correct.
So then it's like, oh, yeah, actually, this was, and they won't recognize any of us. I mean, we're all human. We do that. So it's good that you're acknowledging that early access point, if you will.
Yep. And we always, I mean, you're aware, we have the Employee Assistance Program. Rochelle and I talk about it a lot. And, you know, I present it a lot, throw it out, you know, this is available for you. You can call it, you can reach out. It's nobody's business but yours. Nobody knows about it. These are all options available for you. And I think with your knowledge and experience in the judicial side of things, this is probably the toughest crowd to break through, right? Like, I've watched tons of cops in my career lose their career, because one, they don't know, or they don't want to accept till it's four or five calls later, and, and we're in deep now. So we're breaching that. It's just sensitive. And if you have the magic answer, I would love it, but...
Well, my, and this is a great conversation, so I hope that I'm not boring anybody. But there are a lot of resources available that don't require anybody to come through a department head. So there's access to services that, that sometimes, so if you're up at night and you can't sleep, and you're thinking about a call that you made, or a kid that has died, or an accident that you came on, and it's midnight, there are resources available within our community that folks can access to get help with that, where they don't have to come and talk to
Right.
a superior. And even though that's not, we'd like to know those things, because we want to know that they're addressing anything that might be boring. The reality is, is immediate access to services is probably the biggest reluctance for folks to get services. The other thing is, there's across the country, a reduction in mental health related expense, expenses.
Available, yep.
Yes. And so I would just want to be very clear that any of our staff, regardless of where they're at, that that would be a priority of mine, not only mental health, but also substance use, that, that we as a city would value that in some capacity.
Well, and I've pushed with them and let them know that, at the end of the day, budgetarily, yes, there's all these things. But at the end of the day, your mental health and your well-being, you can't put a price tag on it, right? I've visited with Lexapool a little bit. They actually provide a text-based app on your phone that you can use. And I've researched some of that, but cost-wise, it's, you know, upwards of two grand a month. And it's just like, ew, you know, so trying to research other avenues. I, I spend time there, because I've had so many close friends and partners that have watched their life dishevel over it. So that's a big priority of mine. I just, I'm working on it. There's just so many avenues of where to go, so.
And overall, I'm, I'm thrilled to see that we're addressing the, the lack of accountability. I appreciate accountability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Interim Chief?
Mayor, if I may? Thanks. To follow up on those topics, the early warning part of this is on page 445, if that piqued your interest, and you want to dive, dive into that. I am curious with Employee Assistance, Rochelle, is that, or is that EAP, that's a hotline that our employees can call anytime?
It's a number that you can call. I believe it's, then at some point, you can hook up like a Zoom-type assistance. It's through our insurance program. Now, it's only available if you are on our insurance, which all but five employees or so are. So I have also stated to those employees, you know, if you have a need, go ahead and reach out, and the city will look at some type of reimbursement. For a number of years, the city sort of partnered with Southwest out of Rock Springs, but nobody ever used it. We never had one employee use it. So I don't know why that was.
I'd be curious how we measure, like, satisfaction with this provider that we have now? And you, so we, is it the, yeah, how do we measure if it's the highest quality we can provide? Some questions for us.
If I may, I can reach back out to Lexapool, and it's not specific to first responders. Rochelle and I spoke about it, is, is buying it as a city, an entire city entity. And, I mean, the pros and cons of it are this, if we as the city own it, and people download it and they use it, it is 100% anonymous, but you will get a report that says X amount of your employees used this, and it was for this reason. But it never identifies, one, who the employee is, when, or anything like that. It's just giving you feedback of, as a leadership tool, it's like, okay, so now my, I know of, I have a percentage of people that have this type of problem. How do I start helping or training or teaching different? And I, I'm absolutely willing to visit that again. We can look at some prices with Lexapool again and see what that looks like for us. I don't think it's a bad choice of spending money, but I, I'm in agreement that there's got to be something for people to outreach.
Great, thank you. And Mayor, I just mean, as this conversation's illustrated for us, you know, we do want to return. The council wanted to have another work session on the policy of the, you know, this manual. So as Mayor said, read, you know, it's long, but go through, you can pull out the policy pieces of it, which are at the start of every section. You know, so Personal Benefits has a purpose, a policy, and then the procedure, which, good for us to know. I'm glad for the transparency for us to have it. We don't approve the procedure. We're going to approve policy. I imagine, from what we just did, we still want to have a work session topic soon with just the policy sections. And then we'll go to a singular vote approving the policy.
If it, I think if it would benefit you guys, I, I'm not opposed to pulling every single policy individually and making pages of just policy. It's just, it's, it's a lot of work, but...
Yeah, we, we can scroll through and get to the policy.
Excuse me, I, I have a question, though, as, as, as I'm looking through this and, and I, I got really quite far on it, and it's, it's been very interesting. But, so, we're, okay, procedures, definitions. Okay, I'm, I answered my own question now that I, I look at it in that. I was just trying to figure out where the policy was versus the procedures. Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, moving on. Lance, you're up.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Project-wise, Tank and Pump Station is down to less than a page of punch list items being wrapped up, so that's good. As soon as that's complete, we will advertise, once we make acceptance, and then be able to hopefully release retainage, as long as there's no claims on that project. So it puts it behind us. So see some, some light at the end of the tunnel on that one. We're at Bishop Randall, paving is happening today. So water line is in around the hospital. It's tested and functional. We found a lot more issues with fire lines and service lines around the hospital. Nobody knew where those lines were located, so we spent a lot of time to iron out some of those issues. So hopefully that helps keep the hospital in better service in the future. Still working through a few minor issues up there, and that's going to be paved and a road that's in service shortly and widened. So I think a pretty big improvement up there as far as what was there and what's going to be there now. I don't know if we told you, but water line that we did run into was over-deflected, well beyond what you should do with PVC pipe at the joints, all the way up Bishop Randall. They didn't use fin, bins and fittings to go up that road. Somebody just laid it like a snake. And so we're allowed like 1% deflection, 2% deflection at those joints. And so it was a ticking time bomb, essentially, when we got into what was found underground and how things were installed. But Lincoln Street's moving, you know, still trying to find ways to see, they're a couple of weeks behind their original proposed schedule. So we're having those conversations as to how they get back on schedule. And, you know, I'll update you, if, that's probably next week, we'll have more conversations with the contractor, if that's them potentially subbing out work or changing their schedule, what other things that they're looking at to get where they want to be to finish this job as the contract requires. So it's moving, I think, not as fast as they'd like, or, you know, the community too, when you're interrupting a commercial area. It's, you know, everybody sees what's going on, and, you know, we're working with High Country. They're working on the Tank and Pump Station job and working on this one, and trying to get things done for their community. So I appreciate what they're doing. Very few change orders on the project, or ask for additional time or money at this point. But we'll have to see what that project brings, because it'd be nice if they were on the other side of Fifth at this point. That's where they were hoping to be, but we're still shy of that at this point. The sidewalk job around Gannet Peak, if you have a chance to go check out the widening, there was a field order change. The homeowner wanted to change to a concrete drive versus asphalt. They're working with the homeowner. We're not paying any of that. So there is a small directive that we accepted saying, hey, it doesn't matter to us if that's what you want. On the homeowner side, we were originally putting asphalt in, go ahead. But no major changes on that project to report as far as anything that affects our amount we're paying or construction at this point. Getting ready to bid our next round of jobs. So trying to get the final permits and DEQ approvals, other things that we need to dust off for the next three that we need to get out to bid, shooting for October on that. So that's Buena Vista, Baldwin Creek and Fifth Street that we're looking at putting out later this fall. So quite a few things going on next, the 29th, we're having a strike is going to go ahead and give their 30% update to a group of the, I guess shareholders. And so they've went through three different scenarios and alternatives. At some point, if you guys want a more specific update on that, some of this affects property or potentially affects property. So we should probably have that in executive session if you guys want to hear more. And so right now, just looking at those different alternatives, nothing's been accepted. These are all just potential ideas, but again, when you're drawing over somebody else's boundary, that's sensitive information. So happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
I definitely have questions. I'm here, I gotta make the most of it. First and foremost, Lance, I need to echo what Councilman Larson has said about the amount of work that's being done in our community. I, I, I mean, this is what we're talking about, right? We, we say we're going to do all these things and we do them and here it is, and here's the good example. I would really love any way that we can help support you and especially when you're talking about this project out here that's taking a lot longer and how we as a council can support you so that the narrative is clearly the city of Lander is doing their part and we have a contractor that's doing their part, but they're slower. How do we get that messaging out so that people understand? You know, it's not a blame game, but more maybe a bit more of a transparency is in communication, knowing that you, we're not even to Third Street yet, you know? So any way we can help support that with you and how we need to address it, just let us know.
Sure. And I guess let's talk a little bit about our contracts. So our contracts are interesting, you know, we have a deadline and we set that deadline. And if they don't meet the deadline, what we can assess as a council is what's called liquidated damages. And those liquidated damages are pretty much actual damages of keeping your engineer on longer. And, and, you know, when I was in jobs in Colorado, you'd have contractors who would bid a job knowing that they weren't going to finish on time, overbid the job and just say, we'll take the LDs and we'll work two more months. You know, whatever their means and methods are, are only to the bidder in their, their way of executing that contract. Our job is to make sure that we're following the contract and then, you know, doing everything responsibly within that. If they ask for more time or more duration, working nights or weekends, I mean, we're very accommodating. We had a two block restriction on this. We said, go ahead and open up to three. Like do what you can, like we can manage this at this point to try to catch up. It's great. It's a local contractor. He knows the local businesses and, or they do, I should say, and are working well within that avenue. And I think that they have opportunities to make up time, whether that's to, you know, they have to assess their situation, is it valuable to maybe hire somebody else to help, you know, open up like from Fifth Street on? Or what does that look like from a damages standpoint? So I think it's a little premature to, you know, put any pressure on them if they still feel like they can meet the contract. Now, if they come back and ask for extra time or extra compensation, that's when the council gets to weigh in. You know, do we feel like this is deserved? And you'll have my recommendations on what's going on with these projects. Do we think that they need two more weeks or another month? What does that mean for us if it was to extend into next spring? And, you know, a contractor really doesn't want to be working on a job into next season anyway, because that can affect their bonding and their next jobs that they want for next year. So I think they're motivated and trying to do the best they can. As far as support from the council, I think it's just, you know, when we get to these situations, we'll have to decide, you know, on the recommendations, is this something we can accept? Is this, you know, are we within the parameters that we can work within? I just, the job's carrying over into multiple years. That means that we're managing three big jobs next year on top of other jobs finishing up. And the goal is to not be there, but we didn't get bids on our first round of these. We don't have a lot of local contractors who can bond out to, you know, over $5 million or $10 million in these jobs. So we have to be a little bit thoughtful and maybe accommodating to some extent, but also know that we need to get these jobs done and keep them moving so that we're getting value out of the bid. We're not extending into other years and then our prices are going up too on pushing projects out even further. That's where next year, I'm like, are we gonna get three contractors who can bond and bid the jobs next year? I'm a little concerned on what this looks like, you know, as we bid more projects. So I, I think it's, it's a double edged sword. When we're in the Denver metro, when I was in the Denver metro area, this was a lot different than being in rural Wyoming with people who could do this type of work and willing to relocate and mob to come in and do it.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Josh.
Do they, do they get fined for going over contract? Is it, I don't know if that's how it works within the city or?
It's liquidated damages and so it's not necessarily a fine, it's a dollar amount per day.
Okay.
Until completion. So, yeah, and really the city doesn't make anything off of that. Like it's set about a thousand dollars in our contracts. When you put an engineer being onsite observing work, they're about a thousand dollars a day. So it just correlates to keeping the job going.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Larson.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have, does each one of those projects have a specific person that's watching over the, the project for the city? Or is that yours and Hunter's job to, to make the, the rounds about 15 times a day to each one of those jobs?
So contractually, we're required to have an RPR or an engineer involved in these contracts. They're the third party in case we get into a dispute, that's taking the notes, watching the work on a daily basis. As far as the city's rep, it's Hunter, myself, and then the water department. So we are sending help and it was great because we got to train these guys on building Second Street and building some of these projects from the ground up. So they know exactly what, you know, it looked like when they were doing it and they're very helpful. So not just Hunter and I, we're also getting some assistance throughout. And those guys are helping turn valves or get things on, get things off on a daily basis. So getting a lot of help through the public works team to manage them.
Okay. Lance, I have a question and it might be a little bit in the weeds. It's just for my own curiosity about this particular project. So with regards to the timelines and the holding them accountable to those timelines that were within that contract, those, the contracts are built for the entire contract for one single timeline. Is that correct?
Correct.
So is the, is there any benefit to, or is there an opportunity to write those in such a way that they are phased? So that there's a requirement to complete a phase by a specific timeline that sits within a subset of a larger complete timeline of the entire project? Because what I'm thinking about, and I'm sorry, this is a long question, but what I'm thinking about is that if you tell them by such and such completion date, they have to have an entire thing done, it could have a very unequal impact across all of these blocks. Whereas if we could be more nuanced in the way that we approach our future contracts and we say, phase one consists of stages A, B, and C, I want phase one done. And I know we're getting very particular and directive in how we're doing it, but our desire to be directive is based on impacts that we've seen in the past. So we have to, we have to tailor how specifically we get, but is there the ability to do something like that?
There is, and that's what was in our first round. And when we got feedback from bidders on why they didn't bid, they didn't feel like they could meet those schedules. So then it opened up, it's like, to get a bidder, we're going to have to give them flexible time in two years in order to do this. So you're exactly right, we can put in all kinds of requirements within these contracts. And a lot of times the penalties within those contracts, you have to write them in. So is that a monetary penalty? And when you have one or two bidders, you know, a lot of times what you'll get is saying, all right, I'll just build it into the bid price that I'm going to be there longer anyway. So they'll essentially give your money back to you, but it doesn't mean it makes them any faster based on means and methods. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit of that, what does the contract look like? What do you want out of it? What can we require? We can put in stipulations to try to move them faster. Well, a lot of the feedback we're getting is just lack of workforce. You know, we'd love to have more people working on this. We'd like to have a sanitary crew moving ahead of us and then a water crew moving. Well, they're one in the same right now. And so, you know, that's the feedback you're getting from the contractor world is we'd love to do more. There's people who'd love to open asphalt plants and concrete plants and expand their businesses. They just can't find employees. Yeah, is a lot of your issues that you're looking at in a small town.
So just my last comment about is that on the completion of this, which seems to be a monumental project and it's going to be a significant improvement to the city, right? So on completion of it, I think it would be very worthwhile for the city to AAR this or do an after action report on it. What could we do better? How could we approach future projects better? You know, where did we stumble? Where did we fall down? Where perhaps did we enable them to stumble and fall down? You know, and how can we do better next time?
I think that's great. And I think we like to do that after every project, just kind of what can we look at? And our specs and contracts modify and change. We try to learn from those mistakes that we've made as well. I, I completely agree. I, I guess I'm a little bit worried. We talked about attracting potentially a bigger bidder to Lander, you know, that could get more work done efficiently by putting bigger contracts out there. You know, there are ways of doing that, but is it all, is that beneficial to, you know, our local contractors who are trying to make this work and, you know, the money stays local versus enticing somebody much bigger that maybe doesn't put as much thought and care into what they do and how they do it. And we're just worried about speed and effort. So it's, it's, it's a big balancing act out there. And, you know, I guess we can look at our different options and award. We're talking about these next projects being somebody able to come in and win all of that work and manage. And maybe they are bringing asphalt plants and relocating and doing work. But, you know, they're going to move at the pace that they need to. And our community at that point is probably, they're not going to be as sensitive as to their needs as they do so.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I just want to maybe close, I don't know, but say, Lance, I just learned a lot.
Yeah.
And context, I didn't have, you know, we were faced with folks who were grumbly and it's hard for me not to look out of that street and feel grumbly too. And so the context you just gave us, a little detail, I'm really grateful for that. And I'm so glad we have your expertise on these, overseeing these projects and contracts. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Also appreciate, I know you're trying to be as flexible as possible in terms of, you know, opening up three blocks or weekend work or later in the day or what have you. And also appreciate that you're not willing to be flexible on the standards. That's really important. So this is part of why many of our roads are in as poor shape as they are. It was the goal of just, just hurry up and pave stuff and not having the proper, you know, compaction underneath and whatnot. So there is benefit to that. And I, I think the pithy summary of what we're talking about here is big projects like this are really challenging in a small community. It takes a lot of patience. We want to maintain good, good relationships with our neighbors who, who are both being affected by the construction as well as those doing the construction. So yes, it looks, looks really different in small town Wyoming than a big city. But Councilmember Cox, good. Okay, great. Thanks for that. A great conversation and questions from you all. Thank you. And thank you again, Lance, for all that info. Regine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff met with a CISA representative. CISA is C-I-S-A. Can't tell you what it stands for, but I know that they deal with, they're the federal arm that deals with cybercrime and internet security. And staff is going to take advantage of some of their free programs that they have right now. So I would expect in the fall that the council will be presented with a report that reports on our risk assessment for our social media, our website, our Muni code, some of those platforms that we use, as well as our everyday Google, Gmail, all those kind of operations that we do. So they presented some really good programs. It helps us think as staff about how we can be better and not make mistakes. And it, and it helps us understand how we could maybe prevent or report cases like where we were breached in the police department and those kinds of things. So we are headed down that path and that report will come before council.
Okay.
Another thing that's going on is we were approached by the state office of DEQ for a brownfield grant opportunity. It's called a community wide assessment. And so the state DEQ has asked if Lander would be one of their named sites in their statewide assessment. Now, Lander staff has already been meeting with DEQ and heirs, assessing some of our sites that may have hazardous chemicals or hazardous particles, wherever, in either our land or our buildings, like the depot, the Garfield shop where we're storing weed and pest chemicals and those kinds of things. So the state came to us and said, well, if you join us and be a project in our community wide assessment grant, that's a three to five year program that the state would monitor for us. And if we were awarded one of those sites in there, they would come in and assess those sites for hazardous sites or buildings. So that's exciting, something that we might get in a grant opportunity where we are not beholding to the capacity that staff would have to have to do the same kind of thing because the state would be doing all of that grant management.
Yeah. Regine, is there potential for financial assistance and the remediation if things are found through that?
There is. And remediation could go a couple of ways. Remediation could be getting rid of the hazard, encapsulating the hazard or demolishing everything, carrying it offsite. The other exciting thing about this is it opens the door for grant opportunities to completely redevelop the site. So if the depot turns into something else, a museum, a bookshop or something like that, there are redevelopment and economic development funds, the door's kind of open for some of those. One more thing, the, we are in the final plan review for the Jefferson Street extension into Propoza River Park. I would expect before you guys to see a land purchase offer for the gentleman that was willing to sell some of that property to us to get Jefferson Street through into the park and probably a plat that would have a, a park, make the park a public land instead of our five, as it sits now, and annex the second half or the east half of the park into city. So those things should be coming in again this fall. The purchase offer for the land under CDBG grant funds and the, the final plans and bid for Jefferson Street extension.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for Regine?
Just a question of clarification, that community wide assessment and a broader state assessment, that's, did you say it was a brownfield?
That's the program and that's one of the EPA federal programs that still has funding. So it's a smaller version of the old super fund sites that they did for like the Dubois timber processing and those kinds of things. But it is still, it's federal funding that has not been cut or subject to any of the processes going on now.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Good, Rochelle.
Sharie isn't here this evening. She's at APT conference. However, I did want to let the council know that on the August 12th regular meeting, there will be, she has a budget amendment. So I will send that to the paper for two weeks of notice for public hearing. That amendment will be on there. There will also be a couple of other public hearings. So it's going to kind of be busy. It'll be the public hearing and the first reading for the tree board ordinance. And then depending on how tonight goes, with review of the two proposed ordinances, those would be on there as well potentially. I just wanted to give you a heads up that that one, uh, looks like it'll have potentially a couple of public hearings.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to five new business. We've got three things there. So one, our first one, this discussion regarding the allocation of the remaining half cent economic development tax funds. So some of the things we've talked about before and we've had some information from Tim Nichols with WRTA and Kyle Butterfield, Kevin Kraschisnik with Fremont Air Service Team in terms of continued support until another ballot initiative of some sort can provide continued funding. I do have some numbers for that element. And then we can have some discussion about what we think is the best, best use of those funds. So in terms of where WRTA is, and this is So in terms of where WRTA is, uh, and this is all the through, the the funding needs through the beginning of July of calendar 27. So that, the reason that date being picked is when um a ballot initiative would be on in 2026, collections would start uh April 1 of 20, calendar 27, and then be distributed typically it's three months or so for that. So that's why we're at that date. So currently for WRTA, their funding shortfall, uh, not including the the additional services that they're um going to start doing in conjunction with the Riverton Senior Center is $312,602 that they're hoping to made whole by that time. In terms of where things are at for the revenue guarantee, now that some time has passed, uh, we've received the Q4 25 payment. So pulled that out of the residual funds and went ahead and pulled out the uh totality of the revenue guarantee for FY 26 as an aside. So we've talked about that there's a funding cap with Sky West for that. And indeed, in this year, June was the last month of that contract. We did hit that cap and they abided by it. They continued flying but did not charge over that. So, so we pulled out uh that amount. So what remains currently in the funding pool to get through that point in 27 is $578,150. So what that leaves is once that's removed or subtracted from the fiscal year 27 revenue guarantee is $1,264,636 for that. Folks also asked, I'm giving some information because I know that was one of the things that folks asked for. Uh, another of the questions is what is the county doing? And yeah, how much does the county have and what are they doing with it? Right now, the county has approximately 1.9 in unobligated funds from um their economic development. And they have not made plans for that, but in conversation in their own strategic planning. Um, they recognize that there will be a need and there is a willingness to provide some financial support. Their their preference is to wait until building the FY 27 budget before they dedicate it to line items for those things. And then of course, our very own, how much do we have left? Um, according to Shari, got this number um today. So in our unobligated funds, um, and that could change because there are some folks who have turned back funding. So it could increase. There is $960,682 for that. So I just gave folks a whole bunch of numbers there. Uh, 960,682 is what's remaining for that. I also, if it would be helpful and it looks like I left it shoot on my desk, I can run and get it. Um, if it would be helpful, I also have the ballot language as well as the, oh, Regine's going to go. Yeah, thank you. Uh, the ballot language as well as the MOU among the municipalities of Fremont County about how those funds would be um distributed since it's either been quite some time or welcome Councilmember Chastity to drinking from the fire hose. Yeah, trying, trying to catch you up for that. So with that information, I'm curious to hear folks thoughts about um potential, I, how you would allocate that.
Mayor, may I um just review the numbers quickly?
Yes.
Because I do think there's some other um.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thanks, Regine.
I think in addition to WRTA and FAST, there's some other ideas that will surface here about uh possible ways to put this money to good use. And so I think before we get to those concepts, I just want to double check some of the number pieces here.
Sure.
Um, the DBRT shortfall is $312 to July 2027. Tim Nichols originally asked us a portion of that, just around 60,000. I think for this budget year, is it, are you presenting the 312 shortfall as though that is something they're requesting from us now to cover the entire shortfall? Or still just a portion of that?
Yeah, I'm I'm glad you asked. Um, no, that is not the request of us. That is what's remaining. And I'm glad you asked that question. Um, part of why that dollar amount is different from what they originally asked is um, so Riverton Council decided to put um their residual towards air service. So Riverton put in uh just shy of 663,000 from the residual discretionary funding. And they've not uh not received anything again from the county. Uh, the county's waiting until next fiscal year to make those allocations.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Um, but we can use approximately $60,000 as for uh our share for WRTA's annual budget.
That's correct.
Yeah, great, yeah, okay. And then I'm just not a good head with the numbers. So when you presented FAST there, you talked about a shortfall of $578,000.
And that's, that's the funds remaining that we currently have.
There we go.
Not a shortfall.
Okay, so what they need to get through July 2027 to continue air service at the same rate is the 1 million odd that you mentioned, is that right?
Um.
What's the shortfall for them to July 2027? I guess is the way to phrase it.
Right, and I just realized the info I got from Mr. Butterfield was um the total revenue required for fiscal year 27. And so I gave you the deficit number 1.2. Um, I would have to clarify with him, but my understanding is that's for um the entirety of FY 27. All right, so that would be about about the time that um a ballot initiative would be in effect.
Great. And that's the one point.
Thank you for clarifying. One point, uh, 1264.
Thanks.
636.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
And Mayor, that, one follow up question with that, that one, 1.2 million does or does not include the 578 they have on hand?
That, that is uh the residual after the 578 has been subtracted.
So if they, they consume all 578, there's 1.2.
Yes.
Still, okay, thank you.
Yep. Yep. So yeah, so I'm curious to hear thoughts from folks about funding these two initiatives or if there's other things that you think would be beneficial.
Do you have the percentage of that remaining? Cause it's um, so of that one, save for, let's talk just WRTA. Julia, did you mention a a number that that we would then? Cause we're not going to do the total 312,602. We would do a percentage of that.
Yeah. Councilwoman Cox, yeah, but I'll passing down is from Tim's presentation to us in April, was it? Mr. Nichols, excuse me. And my understanding there is that his request for us at the time, our share of what he needed for fiscal year 26 was 60K. And so I, in the absence of having him here, would use as a proxy for this fiscal year and next if we wanted to go through 2027. So July 25 to 26, 60K, 26 to 27.
Right.
So 120. Somebody should correct me if that doesn't seem.
Right.
But that's, yeah.
Okay. Yep. That's.
Did anybody want to see this?
Will that be our share?
That would be meeting what Mr. Nichols requested from Lander for our service. Or for the service we. Okay.
Apologies, I have a catch up question here. Um, so in the, in the verbiage here, it says that there's a requirement, if I understand this, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, but there's a requirement to spend 30% on transportation, infrastructure, commercial service, ground transport and 70% on economic development projects, right? That's the verbiage. So we have 960 left. There was X amount that was already spent. It was that X amount spent at a 3070, 30% 70% ratio already, such that the remaining amount we have, we're also bound to spend in a 3070. Do we have that data? Because we're still bound by the 3070. And if we, if we do not know currently how it was previously spent, then our hands are bound that we cannot spend until we have that information. Is that, am I completely off base on that?
Off base sounds too strong.
Okay.
Um, we are not bound by 3070. So this was cor- correct.
Okay.
So, so the 70% was at the discretion of the local governing bodies. Um, and so that was the, for us, the lift committee, uh, which is what I think all of us heard substantially about, that that's the portion of this that the public did not like. And using discretionary funds for the various things that it went to.
Okay. So we're no longer, we're no longer required to act in accordance with these ratios?
Mayor, if I may, let me say that differently because we would still be bound by the ballot language. The 960,000 that we've collected is representative of the 70% portion.
Correct.
That we.
Supposedly.
Yeah. Yep, so we have spent the dollars. The tax monies have come into Lander, have gone out in accordance of 3070, right? So 30% went straight over to Riverton and WRTA and 70% that was allocated uh for the business grants that we went through. And this, what we have left here, the remainder of the 960 is um the portion of the 70% that's unspent.
Yeah.
So we are bound to the ballot, but this uh 960 is not bound to be divided by 3070.
Correct.
That totally makes sense. So the 9, the 970 sits firmly within the 70%, right? But does this not have some kind of um beyond inherent guidelines though that you can't, that it, that, would this language also say that it cannot be spent within the 30%? On?
No. No.
Because in the original language, it says 30 has to be done for it for transportation. 70% has to be done for non-transportation. Correct?
Does economic.
Economic development.
And, and so I think why, for for my point of view, um, transportation is one of the building blocks of economic development. So we're required to spend it on economic development according to the ballot language of uh how do we define? Um, any project that retains or increases employment and or results in a net gain of money into the community.
Okay, so the ballot, just to catch me up on this, so the ballot language is attempting to create a very targeted carve out of 30% for, for infra, for travel, infrastructure, transportation, right? With the other 70% can be used for anything to include.
Correct.
Over the top, okay, thank you.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, good clear, clear punk question. Yep. Yep, Councilmember Chashon.
Yeah, on the WRTA, I don't know, maybe I spaced out and missed it or something. Do they go off of a percentage of usage to find out what we owe them on? You know, because if a majority of the usage of WRTA is coming out of Riverton or elsewhere, um, and they're, you know, we're not bound per se to pay. Cause it just, I don't know. I'd like to see a percentage of usage, you know, off of like how many people are coming out of Lander using WRTA? How many people are coming out of Riverton on how much we spend on that transportation? I agree, it's a great uh, great situation for people without vehicles and needing to get somewhere. Uh, but it, how do you know they're just not, you know, pulling a number out of their hat and saying, we need this from you and you're hauling 10 people around Lander and you know, 200 people out of Riverton or something.
Yeah. Um, great question. I, I can't give a lot of specifics to that, but I, I did have a conversation with Mr. Nichols this morning. And I actually asked him, so I, I have an assumption, so that's why I wanted to ask, that the majority of WRT, WRTA passengers are coming from outlying areas into Lander or Riverton. And he said, you know, that's what I thought too, but the numbers actually show the majority of usage, usage is people going between Lander and Riverton. But, but I couldn't tell you, you know, how many of Lander residents going to Riverton or Riverton residents coming here. But that, that's all I can share with you about. Um, I got my, my assumption um changed, like, oop, I was wrong.
And Mayor, if I can
Yeah.
add what I'm passing around here, um, does show a breakdown by the Tim gave us of the population of beneficiaries that we have for the various lines, uh Safe Ride, Share a Ride. And then how, I don't know what the calculation looks like, but then clearly that informs then the share that we have of um of those uh, of that subsidization request. And the council, this is just a printout I have, but it's in our April work session, shared drive under fiscal year 26 local subsidization requests. It's actually easier to read there than the printout. So yes, in short, too.
Yeah. Great, thanks for that.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Larson.
So if the, the majority is going either to Lander, from, from Lander to Riverton, to Riverton to Lander, that says to me that uh that either way, you know, that, that's kind of a 50/50 split. You know, you've either got people from Riverton that's coming over to Lander to, to work, to do, do whatever, or else you've got the people from Lander that's going over to Riverton. And so I, I don't know uh how you would differentiate that. It looks to me like that that's uh, that would, that would be an even split there to me.
Yeah, makes sense. I hadn't thought about it that way, but yeah, that makes, makes sense.
Mayor, just.
Councilmember Cox.
Just because I used WRTA when I was working in Riverton. The, the vast majority of riders out of Lander, of course, lived in Lander and traveled to Riverton for school. Because school and or work, so we do have that component with Central Wyoming College as well that, several. But I think you're right. I think the discrepancy is, um, there's a lot of resources that are now provided by WRTA that weren't initially. And so they're reaching out and doing some other routes and some other resources that we didn't have and being more of a public transportation versus a route. And I think that is um going to impact our community even more in, in a more positive manner as well. So it's always been such a great resource, but, and low cost, I might add for the rider, which.
And, and that's a good point. So one of the things that I think about is I, I'm really pleased with the growth of the Safe Ride program and what that does. And while it's not a service I think I'll ever need personally, I am on the road though. So I'm really glad drivers who should not be driving are not on the road at the same time as that. So I still have, I would say I still have a direct benefit from that, even if I'm not directly using that program.
I, and I agree. I, I want to just comment that public transportation in our community is a, is a resource that's lacking and something that we don't always think about because, you know, we have vehicles and, and we're, we're, you know, in a position to be able to do that. There are a lot of working, specifically young working families without transportation who find themselves walking a, a fairly distant, a fairly good distance. And so WRTA has done a good job of addressing that barrier within our community to, to have enough workers and to have enough people in places that need to be there on time and, and some of those types of things. So Riverton would probably benefit more from that aspect of the resource due to the nature of the geographical nature of Riverton. It's a little bit more spread out, et cetera. So Lander wouldn't be, they wouldn't benefit as much. We wouldn't benefit as much. So there's that portion of it. So I think as he's, as he's um done the math with that, I, I like the percentage of which we're contributing versus other communities to, to that revenue.
So Councilmembers, too.
Thanks, Mayor. I am in favor of allocating some of this to WRTA and some to the airport. Um, I want to bring up a different concept for us to choose through as well. And that's that, um, I think if we could save a portion of this and dedicate it towards a city of Lander recreational infrastructure, there'd be a lot of benefits for not only economic development in the town, uh, but also our future generations. And it, it strikes a chord with me and our, our duty to our constituents here. And this is going to sound a little controversial, right? Because three, four, whatever years ago, we said, gosh, we don't want to entertain uh city of Lander applications uh to the grant, to the lift funds, right? And that was a pretty firm line from council that I backed 100%. Um, I didn't want us to be competing with businesses that were going to be submitting those applications as well. And I didn't like the idea that we would be deciding about our own projects in a competitive grant process as those arbiters. Um, the context for me has changed now because it's not a competitive grant process and we're not competing with business applications in that economic development. Um, and it strikes me that, think about the Parks Master Plan we just approved. We have pretty cool ideas, right? For some expansion of parkland, not expansion of parkland, sorry, expansion of infrastructure on existing parkland that's undeveloped right now. Hermansky Property, Propoja River Park, some redesigns for existing parklands. It can be put to better use. It would benefit economic development through uh actual events as, you know, sporting events, concerts, or just quality of life. And it worries me to have that kind of aspirational park master plan out there with, with zero plan for how we're going to fund it, right? And nothing in the kitty to dedicate towards that. So I wanted to propose that we set aside. So I wanted to propose that we set aside as a starting place for negotiation, right? Two hundred thousand dollars, let's say, in a dedicated fund to gain some interest. And we use it to, uh, use it just for recreational infrastructure projects in our city parks. Uh, we can put some sideboards around, you know, what types of those are economic development. Get a little bit of interest on it, set a timeline by which we use it. I don't want it to sit aside for ten years and we forget about it, but three to five years, we spend this down. Perhaps it could be limited only to matching the grant funds we need to attract other grants. You know, we look at a lot of opportunities. It says, great, thirty percent match. We don't have that saved right now for parks explicitly. And so I wanted to put out for us to consider that we, we set aside some portion of this, uh, to save for those, those purposes. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. To an interesting perspective, I'm curious to hear what other folks think about that before I share my thoughts for that.
Mayor, man. I'd question the legality of that. It wasn't, uh, proposed on a ballot that way. Honestly, it was twenty percent to Riverton Airport, ten percent to WRTA, seventy percent to the public. I did not vote yes to stop the public from getting the money. You, the rest of the council did. So basically, we cut the public out by council vote on the seventy percent. And then now we're deciding what to do with the taxpayers' dollars that they, you know, had taken on the half percent. I, I just, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know all the legal, uh, cool things like Adam and the rest of them, but it doesn't seem right to me to take money from the public and then change what was put on the ballot via vote through council and then decide, hey, we want to do this with it instead. I think, you know, I, I just question it. I think that if something's on the ballot, ballot, people voted it in. We should stick with what the people voted for, not just make up rules as we go kind of thing. I think that's what kind of put a sour taste in people's mouths in the first place on it. That's my thoughts on this.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing that. Other thoughts?
I do have, so. Okay, uh, so, I, you know, I of course like the idea, I share both concern as well as somewhat of excitement of what, what that could look like in our community. I also feel as though LIDA should have a, a piece, a portion of this, not should have, they're not entitled to anything, nobody's entitled, but could have to move their mission. They've got a good, a good roadmap as to how we can start generating some of this and enhance our current businesses in town, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, I, I do, I do like this idea, and Josh, I completely agree with you about the concern. But I remember our conversations with the Lander Girls Softball and the excitement in our community around the thought that we could actually spend the money on that. So I'm, I was thinking about that today and I was like, you know, there was a lot of support when we were talking about how we could impact the Lander Girls Softball and just that with a good portion of the LIFT funding. And there was absolutely nobody that disagreed. And it was the first time that we had these real in-depth conversations about why that was so valuable to our economic development. And so again, I echo the concern, I, I, I read the ballot over and over again and I think, oh, man, is that what we're supposed to spend it on or not? But I also think it could be interesting, you know, given that we, I want to support the WRTA, I want to support the airport, but I also want to be cautious about that too, because I've said before, when does it end? With those supports? And then how do we leverage the funds that we have to enhance our community? That then makes us a drawing point for people to continue to return. Because when people come here, they come back. And we want them to come back. So it's, it's a fascinating debate.
Yeah. Councilmember Cassidy.
So I, on, on reading the verbiage of it, I feel the same way that you do, that if there's, if it's, if my description of it earlier was correct, that it was a very principled targeted message of pulling thirty percent out for this specific thing with this other seventy seems to be very broadly written, right? That that seventy percent could be allocated back over to, to transportation, but it's not specifically tailored for that in the verbiage. So I agree with what you're saying. So that's one thing I'm hung up on is the, is the verbiage and staying true to that verbiage as best that we can, firstly. Secondly, I, I don't know, I would like to know from you if, if I'm the only person here right now who, I don't feel an urgent and need to make a decision on it immediately. You know, this is probably something that is worth chewing on because there are opportunities outside that door that we are not aware of. Absolutely. There's the, there's the things that we're considering currently, but there's many other things that we probably don't even know about that could sit within that seventy percent and would be viable and would be very beneficial that we probably don't, we're not aware of. So if we fixate on the things that we know on, about now, like WRTA, air, parks, it might be an error, perhaps it's an error, right? I agree with you, Josh, that, that the theme and the message of that seventy, we probably, we need to stay true to that and understand what that is. It seems to me when I read it, it's very local, it's exceptionally local. So how do we leverage that to the, the best we can, you know? So that's, those are things I'm kind of coming back around to in my mind on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson.
Well, I'm very, very much pro the, the, the airport subsidy. That, that's, that's very, very high on my list. WRTA, when, uh, Mr. Nickel was, was here, um, making his, his push for that. He stated, you know, that, uh, public transportation is not something that will ever pay for itself, you know, that it's, it's not going to make money. But it's something that is is very crucial, shut off my mic there, very crucial to the, just, uh, I'm, I'm trying to think how to, um, to state it properly, that, uh, a city or a, a people that is trying to, uh, act in a, a manner that is equitable and, uh, and that, that's not what I'm wanting to say either, not equitable, but in a, um, a manner that is beneficial for, for the community as a whole. You know, that we need to provide public transportation. It, it's, it's not an option, okay? And, uh, the, the fact that, uh, it will never pay for itself, uh, doesn't take that responsibility away from us. And, uh, so I, I, I feel very strongly with the, uh, with the public transportation also. We have been in the past, as, as Julia stated, you know, that we've got the seventy percent that we, um, dedicate to the, to the Lander community itself, and I can, I can see where, uh, that seventy percent could very easily go to, uh, to public transportation and still be involved with economic development, same way with the, the air traffic, uh, or the, the air subsidy. Uh, I, I think that's a very strong, um, mover on the economic development. I, I struggle to, uh, you know, go in with the, I, I, I think that the city stepped up big time with the, with the softball fields. I, I think that they've done a great job coming in there and, uh, and picking up the slack there. Would it be nice to have two hundred thousand dollars in a, in a, I, I don't want to say a slush fund, but a, a fund out there? You know, to, uh, uh, and, and I like the idea of, you know, using that as a, um, to, uh, offset the, the grants, you know, for, um, but I just, I, I, I struggle to, uh, make that jive with, with what the, the language of the of the, um, bill itself says, you know? And so I, I guess, I'm really, um, conflicted on the seventy percent there as to where that should go and how it should go. I, I, I can see it very easily going to the, uh, to the WRTA. I can very easily see it going to the airport. Others incidents within the city itself, uh, I'm a little bit more reticent there.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you. Before I share my thoughts, I want to share my appreciation that we're having this conversation and that we're, we're coming at it with, what's best for the city of Lander clearly is our first and foremost goal. And that we're approaching also with curiosity and speaking frankly about our, um, our hopes and concerns for it. And, and what is our, our duty about, um, I think we all take the responsibility of managing taxpayer dollars very seriously. So thank you for, for your, um, your thoughts on that. For my own, um, a few things there. I, I likewise am hesitant to use it for something outside of, um, WRTA and revenue guarantee for, for a few reasons. One, even before this was, um, or when it was on the ballot and not yet passed, I, like many of you, probably heard from folks, concerns that, oh, boy, this is just going to become a way for the city to expand its general fund and use it for different city infrastructure. And we saw some of those requests being, coming to us, uh, as well for that. And to me, the, another reason is, both of those, as Councilmember Larson has noted, are truly tied to economic development. They are clear drivers for it in, in pretty substantial ways of getting workforce to the job of education for folks to be in better jobs, um, et cetera, for that. And, uh, you know, we, we don't have the same economic data for WRTAs we do for air service, but we, um, which has a pretty clear ROI on it. And, and again, hearing the, the concerns for folks as is up for renewal about how the, the discretionary funds were being used, uh, and folks generally saying, hey, I voted against it. However, if it were strictly for the transportation element, I would be in favor of it. And so I'm mindful of those conversations that I've had with, with community members. I also think about there's other opportunities for us, and I'm glad folks are thinking about that, both, um, the broader, we don't know what's around the corner. Uh, I think we do have some other funding sources coming down the pike that I would be much more comfortable using, creating a corpus for use for city projects. The major one for that being the Maven Revenue Recapture. So that's not taxpayer dollars. It's coming from a private business. It is to be used for economic development. And we have the ability to, um, define what that constitutes as well. Uh, I think we've learned a lot of lessons from, from the LIFT program. But again, I, I think because it's not taxpayer dollars, it gives us a bit more latitude for how we would want to use that. Also, things like the TAD grant that currently is distributed by the chamber, that's something that the city of Lander could follow suit with what Riverton's doing and do the distribution for that. And then I also think there's a, a possibility of conversations with, uh, Lander District Rec Board about what's the highest and best use of those funds? Because that, again, is an ongoing program and there's, there's opportunity there, I think, to have continued conversations about, what is the best use for that type of thing? So, um, that's my take, uh, on those things.
Quick question of clarification for you. So, you know, we have nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars remaining. And for the rec, the recapture or the revenue guarantee, you have five hundred and seventy eight thousand, which equates to one point two million by FY twenty twenty seven. But that's not our portion, right? That's the entirety. So we would have a percentage of that.
That, that's the local match.
Right. So that includes all of Fremont County.
Yeah.
And in the past, and I know this was kind of a loaded question, but in the past, we have, um, so this year, do we know we've contributed to the airport? Dollar-wise, total?
Uh, I, as far as I, I don't think this, we haven't contributed anything extra out of, except for what was allocated from that, the dedicated to air service.
We did do, we did. They came for a request to put, no, well, it would have been to put on the two, so we would have two flights. We gave an additional hundred and twenty, that's right, a hundred and twenty thousand on that request, and that was last year.
I believe. It was last fiscal year.
Then that would be in, in addition to the twenty percent from the.
Correct. Yeah.
But we're not sure what the, that figure is at this point. What our twenty percent is, doesn't he? And I know Shari's not here, so please, I mean, she would know probably what our.
Yeah, I, I don't have.
Contribution was. Well, I gotta believe it's not, it's not five hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. It's less than that.
Do the back math, that twenty percent of the, twenty percent of the thirty would be two seventy four, okay? Plus the one twenty? In addition to one twenty, so put you at almost four.
Yeah.
Right, that's, yeah, two seventy, that would be about two seventy four. If you, if nine sixty is seventy percent, right? Just doing the back math, nine, if nine sixty is seventy percent, then twenty percent of the total one hundred would be two seventy four, four eighty, plus the one twenty would be about four hundred. So I'm hoping, I'm helping with your pursuit of the numbers.
You, you are helping, but not in a good way.
I mean, I mean, if, yeah, yeah, I mean, if, 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 if Lander's given four hundred, you know, if Lander's given four hundred and, and that's, that's twenty percent in accordance with the verbiage. And then an additional one twenty, and I'm hung, I'm still hung up on that verbiage. I don't think I'm going to be able to get over it because if, if you tell me that, you know, we're going to collect this total amount and I'm telling an individual, which I wasn't here, if I'm telling an individual that, you know, we're going to allocate specifically and very targeted, ten percent for this and twenty percent for that, it's implied that seventy percent is going to go elsewhere. It could also go over there. Yes, I agree with that, but it's implied that it's not. Right? And I'm, I'm not certain if the change of public opinion that resulted in the, the, um, collapse of this program was because of the intent of the program or the execution of the program. You know, it's my understanding that it's the execution of the program, not the intent. If it's the execution, if I'm correct about that and it's the execution of the program, then we just need to execute better. That's all. We just need to take the nine sixty we have, be thoughtful about it, go back to the drawing board on how we can execute better on behalf of the, the municipality and spend that seventy percent in a way that's more in line with their, their desires, you know? That doesn't support WRTA, that doesn't support the airport, and I'm conflicted with that personally, but I, I'm wrong somewhere. I need somebody to point out to me where I'm wrong so I can, I can understand it better.
So, so private, so the, the seventy thirty and the funds allocated were done per capita. So what we got was based per capita for Lander. And the, the thirty percent, likewise, that was the, the per capita that was dedicated. And then the seventy percent, we are not obligated for seventy thirty within that. It's this, this governing body to make that decision. In terms of the execution, part of the challenge for that, or here, I'll share some of the conversations I've had. So this group of people says, well, it shouldn't go to established businesses because they should just go get a loan. Then another group says, well, don't give it to new businesses because the likelihood of failure is really high and that's a waste of taxpayer dollars. Okay, so businesses are out. Okay, well, it shouldn't go to nonprofits because they're not generating the sales tax, so they shouldn't receive it. And then it shouldn't go to the city because then we're expanding our general fund. Process through this. So, so I think that's how, how to get over that execution, again, with, with the taxpayer dollar. Source of it is challenging and why I think with a Maven Revenue Recapture, we have much greater latitude. Because it it doesn't come with that same. Excelled the ownership of the individual taxpayer.
And and the messages I've heard mirror exactly what you just said, you know? The transfer of public funds to private and businesses not supported, right? There's some shall nots in here. Very specific. Legal, I believe, shall nots to include the general fund, right? So if you. And three relate on the table just now by you and and there perhaps are more, I don't know, but there's private entities, not for profits and. And the city, right? And if we understand that those two are immediately off the table. Then we have the city. And we have a shall not restriction. Which drives us towards what what Julia said, which was an economic development. Allocation that is not within the general fund. Is that something that can be legally done? So does that, so what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to push across the impossibles or the not allowed. And then understand. What we have left, what our delta is, and then that's going to tell us in my mind. Our only options, and then we pick from those. You know? So it it sounds like it's going to be for economic development outside the general fund. Within the municipality, not to private industry. Or privately owned businesses. My opinion, but an opinion only, not to transportation. You know? That's kind of, I'm, that's where I'm kind of. Drawing down into, you know? All all of that sitting on top of this very, very broad. Choose your own adventure of economic development, you know, economic development, which we can. You can kind of. Justify it. Anyhow, you know?
That's good. I would just really want to know what our contribution has been. Overall, for. The transportation aspect of things. And then the last question I have, are we able to invest this money? Is that allowable? So a high. Return on your investment?
I actually have any. In a, you know, mutual fund or something.
Yeah. Turn it into one point five million or something? Is that even a doable thing?
Deluctant to give any legal advice on the record without going into an executive session. My reading of. What I have in front of me. Says that. The seventy percent allocated to county and six municipalities based on population to manage. And invest in economic development projects of their choosing. It does not give any direction whatsoever. And so you're asking impossible questions to give. Answers to in reality. I mean, if we had a lot of guidance on this, and I don't think. This program would have failed because we would have had better guidance. But instead, they said, hey, you have lots of money, do whatever you want to with it. Municipalities and counties, some did well, some did not. So whether we did well or did not, it doesn't really matter because now we have this money. And. From what it looks like. You have full discretion. To do what you want to with it, but it still has to be for economic development, and that's where you have to be really cautious. In terms of what you want to do with this money, that it fits within the definition of economic development, because I think that's where you're going to run amiss. Of. Any issues or scrutiny from the public. If you're like, well, we want to fund a position with LITA, I don't know if that's economic development or not. We'd have to see if that would fit the definition. Or if you say we want to fund a. Parade down Main Street. I don't know if that fits in the within the definition of an economic development or not. That would have to be something that would have to be vetted out as you go along.
Your question, Councilmember Cox, I'm looking at Article two, seven. Which makes me think a corpus would not be a. An appropriate use, so. Have the right to spend their full distribution of the sales tax for economic development purposes in their community. If their funds are not used or obligated to a specific economic development project. By the general election in twenty twenty four, other parties to this agreement may apply to the government, etc., etc. So to me, I think saying our project is a is a. Investment fund is. Not really in. In alignment with that.
Be my my rate of it.
Trying to leverage some more funds.
Oh, no, it's great. That's that's why we're having this conversation and to, you know, brain brainstorm and and think about all the the, you know, would this work, would that work, would this other thing work, so?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Math is, uh, math, math is doing Lance over here. Lance is doing math over here. We pulled up Shari's annual sales tax reports for the last fiscal years. Our total collections to date on the ED tax was. Two point five five million. If you multiply that by thirty percent, you get that seven hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars were distributed out to the two. Transportation entities. Specifically, the airport got five hundred and eleven thousand plus that one forty one that we gave him at a one time. Deal. One forty one.
So that is over the course of the half cent, though. That's the four year election.
Right.
So you're, then we're dividing five hundred and eleven thousand. By four years.
Well, it's not exactly four years, right? Because the taxes came in April, you know, so.
Well, potentially, because then we collect it till April. So we have this amount of money.
Right, so our collections to date were two point five five million total. Our distribution to the airport through the twenty percent was five hundred and eleven thousand. You guys offered another one hundred and forty one thousand of unspent one quarter, so that's a total of six hundred and fifty two thousand to the airport. Right, to the subsidy, MRG.
Yeah. And again. And and part of why that the request came was the block hour increased substantially from where it was when the ballot issue was created. To then. Years later.
Right, but I'm looking at how we get.
Now we're at a more stable.
Right.
Block hour rate.
And how we get to to fiscal year twenty seven. At this, at the same rate that we paid for the last four years versus the in an increase in that. Distribution from us. So that, so I'm just looking math wise that.
Yeah. So if you're trying to do that math, if you gave them five hundred and eleven thousand dollars over four years, you gave them one quarter of that. That was our our contribution to the MRG annually.
Thank you for doing that, then.
Shari could have done that a lot faster.
Yeah. Mayor, yes.
Mayor, if I may. Could I put on a Kevin Krasznik hat?
Please.
He's the one that through the state always gives us our economic development pyramid talks. So that seventy percent. Can I see that language? No matter where that seventy percent goes, it has to create jobs. Retain jobs. Or bring in net income into the community. So you, as a council, would have to determine what you think a net income into the community is. If LITA doesn't create jobs or retain jobs, you, as a council, have to determine, is that a net income result in a net income? To the community. If you decide to put it in. Recreation infrastructure or in a Y O star account. When that money comes out, this council would have to determine whether it was a net income to the community. And that's the economic development piece. When you guys were determining on Climbers Festival, you gave money to Lander Presents, Softball Ladies. You, as a council, when you voted yes, you determined that those were a net income to the community. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Yep, that's my stupid.
Thank you. Thank you. I think to stay on that topic for a minute, that's that was part of my thinking about the proposal for. Some savings for our own infrastructure development for those recreational activities that are. Economic development, right, that are bringing money into town. We spent quite a bit of the seventy percent. In allocating to associations, nonprofits, other groups that were bringing in people. That increased, they were recreational in nature, right? So Climbers Fest, softball. You know, the list is fairly long there, concerts, bring people into town, and those are entities that. Yeah, clear economic impact on town, right? People came, spent a bunch of cash, they do it every year, and the pressure is increasing on the. Infrastructure we have. So this summer is a great example of. Brewfest is increasing in size, right? The cycle tour came through town and had hundreds of people on our park, so. We haven't expanded or built out the same pace. I would argue the infrastructure that we have. That matches the pressure we have of recreationists or recreational associations that we already determined and gave money to to bring those people to town. So I think that's part of my intention now is to like, correct some degree of mismatch of growing recreational pressure in town is awesome for economic development. It's great for our town. And we don't want to get behind. I'm able to meet that need by having infrastructure that is. Is not viable, right? It's just city park, and we have unused land where we could move some of that pressure over, so I want to meet that need. That's my thinking. I I want to say too, because I just want to be cautious, I think all of us here, five, I didn't say all six, but five. Want to follow the intent of the ballot language. Like, I don't think any of us are here trying to tweak, get away with, alter, you know, we are bound, and and I know we hold that closely, that we are going to do. We're going to make a decision and and be absolutely stay true to that ballot language, that was a directive given to us. The last piece of information I want to share as we think about these. And Councilman Cox, I do want to hear about the leader proposal and what they would do with it, is that we talk a lot about public opposition to the tax. The tax failed, right, across the county. And I think we're looking at the forest and not the trees, so if you'll allow me, if you look at the general election results from twenty twenty four, it's on the county website, and I'll repeat it to you here. The people we represent, the voters we represent, were in majority in favor of the half cent tax. And so Ward, or sorry, Precinct one one was against and voted it down. Precinct one two, one three, one four, one five, and one six voted for the half cent, so I think we have a strong mandate from our voters that the way it was being spent. And the projects that we is. That we chose as well as the transportation are what Lander voters are interested in, so I don't want us to overweight the tax failure across the county. I want us to look at the voters we're accountable to, and and, you know, five out of six precincts said yes. Keep this tax. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you, and and noting that. We're not quite all of us here, but I did have the opportunity since Councilmember Dan Han knew he was going to be absent today. We met on Sunday to talk about it and his. You know, where he would like to go with it. And while I'm, I want to share his thoughts, please don't take it as I'm exactly quoting him, but his preference was. In support of the revenue guarantee and WRTA. And likewise, shared concerns about. Using the discretionary funds, continuing in a manner that we did with the Lift Committee and having thing that would. Cause continued. Frustration for for the public about that. So, but I think we'll. Be continuing this conversation, initially hope that we'd be able to have something on the August. Regular session, and that might be a little premature, while I don't think it's urgent. I do think it's somewhat time sensitive in the in the sense of we want to have a balanced budget, and part of that is having things allocated into the appropriate budget line. So I don't think it has to be right away, but I also don't want to see it continued out for a long time. So with the conversation we have, are folks okay with continued mulling about it and we move? Member Joshon, yes, please.
Yeah, just a a bit of clarification. So this last bout, we keep on bringing up the softball team, the softball fields. We did not use half percent sales tax money to repair the softball fields. The city took it upon themselves to to help them out with that. We did give Knowles forty five thousand, they won sixty, we gave them forty five thousand to throw a party. And now we're. You know, right back to, well, what do we do with the rest of it? I I. You know, this is where it bothers me, is we skipped out on stuff that was real economic development, bringing people into the community to go to tournaments. I got to witness some of the softball playing down there was phenomenal. And there was a ton of people. And it's only getting bigger. They just won state this year. The girls did. You know, I just, I I think we overlook a lot of things to, because we're focused, we're like hyper focused on. You know, the airport, WRTA, because they come and present things to us more than just, you know, a couple of meetings. They're they're constantly coming back and asking for more money. And though I. I. Fully enjoy the services they bring to the people and everything. You know, I feel that. When we put something out in writing and people. Vote on something that way, I I, it's just my, I I don't know if it's my personal beliefs or just the, you know, I think we ought to stand. With what we had in writing and people voted for. Just my personal thoughts. I, as for building the park and all that stuff. People coming to the community and staying in the park, they're not spending money at hotels, they might be buying a little food here and there. But we're not gaining a whole lot of revenue off of that. We're getting a whole lot of people. You know, and a whole lot of traffic, but we're not gaining as much revenue as what's being portrayed. You know, and. I enjoy the park and it it. It's not the same. As it used to be when it's packed and you can't get anywhere, you can't take your kids down there because there's people everywhere, you know? That's all I got, man.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question just for Councilman Han? So what what would your suggestion be on how we spend it? Do you have anything?
Too little, too late now, when we had businesses coming in and we had people coming in, that's when we should have got rid of it instead of sitting on it. My personal thoughts on that, yes.
So moving forward with that. That nine hundred and sixty thousand, you have? Any thoughts, any?
I'm still milling it over. I honestly, I think we stick to what we had in a ballot. I don't agree with putting something out in paper and in writing. And then going against what people voted for because it's. You know, then. I, you know, a lot of it was. Trust me, we all heard it when we were doing, you know, handing out the money to businesses and stuff. We heard it from the public numerous times on. You know, what their thoughts were on it. I didn't get a whole lot of happy thoughts from people on it, so it makes it tough in the long run.
Oh, you're, yeah, you're right. It's a little contradictory because it's.
It is.
They didn't really want it to go for the intended purpose of the seventy percent.
Right.
Or the, not they, because we did have a lot of people that supported it.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank, thank you for that.
Yeah. Again, thank you all for a very thoughtful conversation and one I'm sure we'll continue to have. And I'm going to. Just we move on to. Item B, proposed draft ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven, amending Title twelve. City Administrative Precision, Section twelve, five dash five, compensation of officers and employees of the Lander Municipal Code. So could I get a? I guess we we don't need a motion in a second, but. Rochelle will will turn to you to give us a little bit of the background, and we've got copies of it.
So this this proposal would align. Our current code with the statutory changes that were made. A couple of years ago. Paragraph C does change stepping grade to salary structure table. I'm not sure when Lander. Got rid of the stepping grade, it was before my time, so that's just aligning. The language with the name of the table that we actually use now. Oh, paragraph B, there is an inclusion that as a liaison, just to clarify. The meetings that you're, that council members would be paid seventy five dollars for. I think that was always the intent, I've been told, that just clarifies the language as long as we were looking at. Changing this particular section anyway. E is really the meat and the potatoes, and that is taken straight out of the Wyoming State Statute. City Attorney Phillips did suggest that at the end of. Where during their term that there be a comma there. And add the language in accordance with Wyoming Statute section, and I can't remember off the top of my head which section is that this language comes from, but it's like fifteen. Something, something. So if if the council would like to move forward with this, I would add that language and put it on for August twelfth. It would allow council members to waive their seventy five dollar fees or the the mayor, their salary if they chose to do so.
Comments, question for our city clerk? I want just a minor one. Do we still call it the City of Lander Personnel Rules and Managerial Guidelines?
So those are two different documents.
Okay.
And yes, they still have. Well, I guess it it really is, I take that back, it is the City of Lander. Policy and procedural manual and managerial guidelines, so I will make that change then as well to dub, to align with.
That's truly a semantic change in terms of intent of it. I think it's awesome.
Any other comments, questions?
Great, awesome. Moving on to C, proposed draft ordinance. Uh, moving on to C, proposed draft ordinance 2025-8, Visionary Communications Franchise Agreement. And Lance, I think you are Mr. Franchise for us.
Yes, uh, this is the end product after a discussion with visionary. They wouldn't go to three percent until Century Link was moved from one to three percent. So we got the Century Link done and approved by ordinance previously, they saw that, they agreed. Uh, unfortunately, this doesn't amount to a lot of money because it's on telephone service only. Everybody's doing voiceover IP, we don't collect anything over internet services. It'd be nice if internet services had to pay on what they actually did, but somehow, some way, that slips by through uh, the laws that are out there on what gets paid through franchise fees. So uh, this is, uh, happy to answer any questions that are on the visionary franchise. This allows them to use our right of ways with coordination and permits, but they compensate through fee.
I would add that after I put the packet together, there were a few suggested changes that came through. So should this go forward on the August 12th meeting, it may look a little bit different. Um, Adam had reviewed it and had a few changes for the franchise attorney that I think were incorporated. I don't know that they were substantial.
They weren't. I think that it's just more protection, yeah. Adam, you know.
All that stuff.
Yeah, but everybody accepted a visionary was fine with that. They're like, all right, he earned a salary, you know, he had to weigh in somewhere.
Well, yeah.
But I think that'll be a slightly revised version then, uh, that we'll get to you if you're ready for this to be read in the next meeting.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, I think we will be. And while you noted it's not substantive in the um, money it will bring in, but I do appreciate one of our goals has been looking at any and all um, additional revenue streams and franchise agreements. While we have a a cap on what we can achieve, Lance has been working really hard to get all of our franchisees up to that cap. So thank you for that. Okay, any other comments, questions on that one?
And Mary, just for clarification, is this the cap, three percent? So we're getting them there or we're there?
That is, three percent is the cap.
Awesome.
Uh, they're upcoming in the uh, gas one, we we were charging per therm. And so this is, I guess, premature discussion, but since it's a work session, uh, we can charge a percentage and it's much better for us to charge the percentage than to charge per the therm. So um, yeah, it's good, yeah.
Yep, great. Uh, okay, so next is executive session, that one we do need, believe, right, motion in a second to make it official. We get a motion in a second to adjourn to executive session, please.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cox. We'll call for the question, Councilmember Larson, before you leave your microphone.
Yes.
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 All right, off to executive session.
Mary? Move to adjourn out of executive session.
Thank you, and can I get a second?
Second.
Call for the question, Councilmember Joshon.
Yes.
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 Awesome. Thank you again for an awesome meeting.
Now, do we have to have another adjourn out of this meeting?
Okay, perfect.